So we don't have ringing in the middle of the meeting. And if you'd like to address the board on any item that's agenda or non-agenda, there are forms in the back to fill out, and if you'll bring them to this gentleman here with the orange tie on. Thank you. Danny, I guess I need to call the roll. Our district attorney, Tony Pierce, is here.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Supervisor Tinkle is here. Supervisor Feinberg is here. Supervisor Guy is here. Supervisor Flaherty is here. Our district manager, Chris Shoemaker, is here. And we're delighted to have Stephen Blum with us tonight from... It used to be Severn Trend. It is now...
Infomark.
Infomark.
Rolls right off the tip of your tongue.
Yeah.
One at a time.
The logo reminds me of an ink cartridge.
Sounds like a pharmaceutical to me.
Poor ink cartridge.
Do we have anybody that has signed up to speak? Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, we have a few people.
And don't forget to set our timer.
We'll do that. First on the list we had was Jim Brand, and it was non-agenda item. He had a question about streetlights in Hampton Park Storm Lakes.
Okay. Are these all... Are all those speakers' non-agenda items?
Yeah, we have David Caldwell is here to speak, and Ron Brewer on agenda items. And Joe Schofield also on the agenda, and Phil Measy expects...
Agenda item.
Any reason we can't do the action items I and K under their... or immediately following their public deal?
Yeah, we'll definitely move those up. Let's do the agenda item speakers first.
Mr. Measy?
Phil Measy, 9296 Tri-S Drive, representing P-PAC. And here to talk about an oldie but goodie, which are the conveyances. I recognize the frustration of WCI, Lennar, about these conveyances. On the other hand, we have some frustrations too. The staff, CDD staff, is telling us that P-PAC doesn't really have any standing in this process. And that once Tetra Tech has done its walkthrough and completed its punch list, they accept that, and they are ready to turn this over to the board for conveyance, or recommending conveyance. On the other hand, I notice on today's particular conveyance, which is item 5K on your agenda, that there are still some legal documents that Mr. Pierce has said need to be received before he believes that this... those particular assets should be conveyed. The problem is that we are finding that there are still tons and tons of problems in the areas to be conveyed, with the curbs, with the roads. And Joe Schofield will perhaps comment on this, but he has a dossier of all of the things that have, you know, we feel need to be somehow repaired, resolved before, or certainly in connection with the conveyances. Further, we have the problem that apparently landscaping, which is another of our issues, was not on the checklist or the punch list. And there are lots of landscaping issues as to the condition of the landscaping, and whether all the landscaping is there. There's a listing in the board book on pages 289 and 290 of all of the landscaping things that were to be transferred. And I don't know that anybody has checked to make sure that it's all there, or what kind of condition it's in. So I'm... I guess I'm just here to say that we have a general concern about having assets conveyed to us, to the CDD, that still have a lot of deficiencies, and that we feel that there ought to be some provision either prior to the conveyance, or in connection with the conveyance, to have them corrected.
Thank you.
Mark, question?
Go ahead.
Phil, I was of the understanding, and I understand what you're saying about as far as by the book, the way we do stuff. But I thought we had an agreement that went back to like June or July, that we stipulated that we would notify you of any site inspection so that you all were involved in that process, so that we didn't get to the 11th hour, and we're ready to prove something, and then you guys weren't aware of what was going on. So, one, I thought that that involvement, even though it was... it's not called out anywhere, I thought we had an understanding of that. Then the second thing, and I guess this one will be for Tony, and we're probably going to get into that when we get into that area K, but is this issue of, again, this landscaping. It just seems to be landscaping monuments, streetlights, those type of things fell through the cracks on our design criteria manual. And if I want to liberally read the King's English that's in there, and they say "and appurtenances" or things like that, I guess I can gather all of those things in and say that they're inclusive. But to go through who checks them, I don't believe our agreement, Danny, with you guys have anything that has landscaping or non-utility-related assets. So we've got some deals to handle of how we do that. And then the last one is, what's the magic date? Because the day they were put in, I'm having that in my own HOA, the day they were put in, everything may have been hunky-dory, but if it wasn't turned in immediately, and then there was a, let's say, a lack of maintenance, or events caused by God, i.e. Irma, that tore them out, what do you do? What do you do? Do you go back and redo them? How do you handle that? The issue is that turnover's a turnover. And the question is, is it being turned over in totality, and everything is hunky-dory? Or are you accepting it looking the other way on some of the items? I don't know the answer to that. I want to find out the answer to that.
Yeah, and that's basically where we're coming from.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were going to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Phil, you used a generic term landscaping, which includes a great number of sins. But does it still include P-PAC's desire to have a change in that golf cart road across the boulevard?
Now, that is another thing, and again, that's in your...
I don't mean to bring up trouble that...
Right. There are a number of items we pointed out. That being one of them. That one of particular concern is the rerouting of the golf carts on Cypress Grove. And, you know, we had pointed that... we pointed that out. In fact, there's a memo that I guess April White, or that Tyler prepared, and that has that listed. And it goes back to August of 2016, where we brought up that issue. And it's not a landscaping issue. It's another. But landscaping, when we talk about landscaping, we're really talking about the trees and the bushes, and what kind of condition those things are in. But there are also those additional issues, which had to do with some signage, some lighting, some safety kinds of things.
Aren't all those, though, in accord... weren't all those in accordance with the plans? It's just they have question of secondary design questions?
Yes, that's correct.
Which almost puts them in the category of a change order.
Yeah. And I would have to agree with you there, Ed, that those were things that were not in the plans, you know, that are just concerns. But the one, particular one, Bill, that you brought up is a real safety concern, as far as we're concerned. But I think it's something that, you know, that's correctable relatively, you know, in one way or another by WCI. And I don't know how we handle those. I mean, that's another one of those issues that's just kind of hanging out there. I don't know who's responsible, and what ought to be done. I'm at wit's end on it, very frankly.
And we'll be talking about this in more detail.
Yeah.
Let's hear from our other speakers. Thank you.
Mr. Schofield? Joe Schofield?
Thank you. Joe Schofield from Julia Drive and Karina Pelican Preserve. I just want to expand on Phil. I was on one of the detailed groups that went around and inspected some of the communities. And briefly, I'd just like to say that I have a complete detailed inspection list of several of those communities, listing all the items that we found. I have documenting pictures, which fill up most of this notebook. And I would like to say there's lots of damage to curbing sidewalks. And I question, has anyone personally from WCI and this group gone out and physically looked at and examined any of the work, inspection work that we've reported on in the past? I have no idea what... and if anyone's been involved with that. And I'd like to know, quite frankly, WCI, I don't know if you've sent anyone out to go look at these issues or not, but they've certainly been substantiated through P-PAC and addressed this meeting also. And I'm not hearing an answer, so I'm assuming nobody's done that. I have a question. Being a mechanical engineer, I'm not a civil engineer, but I have some concrete background, and I have some pieces of concrete. And I have pictures of some horrendous areas of concrete curbing that are just cracked, missing chunks out. And I have some samples of those concretes, and I'm wondering if anyone has sent any of this off to an independent testing lab to have the concrete tested. The deterioration of this concrete is just incredibly quick, in a short period of time, to crack like it has, to chip out like it has. And I would recommend strongly that we do more testing, and have someone physically go out and inspect the concrete, see if it meets the specifications. And you might want to check and see if those specifications are actually adequate. I will leave it at that. I have this notebook. I've sent some stuff to Chris. I have more. But I have hundreds of pictures of documented issues that are a great concern. My concern is if the conveyance is done, and we're working on a bond issue, and I don't know the politics of this, quite frankly, but if we're working on a bond issue, and we go back and try to repair and claim money, if there's going to be arguments as to what's acceptable or not acceptable, my recommendation would be get it done now, and then let the bond take place for stuff that would concur. The damage is not from people driving these streets, or curbs, or even from moving trucks. It's very severe. And I just say we should be very careful before we move forward. Thank you.
Question. You're not talking about the original bond. You're talking about a performance bond.
Yeah, I would believe it's a performance bond. I've heard you folks talking about, once everything's conveyed, there's a bond to cover issues that may come up. Okay.
Mr. Guy, go ahead. Give me one second. Let the record show that Mr. Banks has arrived.
The concrete problems that you just described.
Yes.
Can you tell us at what address you found those? What street?
Pieces of concrete I got, one was... one is from Julia and Vitali at that intersection. And several were taken out of the circle there at the Prado Circle. I call it the Prado Circle, at the end of Cypress Grove Drive, where you have all those roads that come in. That circle is literally just beat to death. There's... you can't find... I don't think you could go five feet without finding cracks or pieces of concrete missing in that.
Thank you.
And there's pieces to be picked up. Chris could go over, or anybody could go over. You can just pluck them right out of the... right out of the curbing. They're that loose. My concern is, and the cracks, how deep do they go? And when you get two cracks that are a foot apart, and some of them next to a culvert, what's that mean to the culvert? Is there something happening underneath in the ground that is going to create an issue with the culvert? Is that whole one-foot length of section going to eventually pop out of the ground and have to be replaced? It's going to be very expensive to fix all that stuff. So just my caution.
Thank you.
And the next three are related to agenda items. FPL easement. Mr. Caldwell's here for answering questions, and also Ron Brewer on the tract deal action item. And Mr. Brand just has comments on Hampton Park and Griffin Streetlights.
Did you... did either of you want to address anything now, or do you want to just wait till it comes? Because we'll do those shortly. Okay, go ahead, Jim. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, Jim.
Thank you, Chris. First, Happy New Year to all the board members and to everybody in the audience. Hope you all had a wonderful holiday. I certainly did. You all may recall that the board voted to go to code enforcement, Lee County, in request that the Hampton Park Stormwater Lake System be evaluated by a code enforcement officer. I, along with Mike Tisch, Mr. Tinkle, Ron Worley, a resident of Hampton Park, Elle Harris, who is on your staff, and I have to tell you, Elle knows her stuff. She was awesome. She could point to a plant and tell you what its genesis was. You know, she was really, really good, as well as was everybody. It was a really... I participated in the inspection of the lakes on the 21st of December, and then we didn't get finished, so they went back on the 26th. I was not able to participate. But I know that the lakes were finished, and a report has been filed by code enforcement. And all 14 lakes, all 14, are not in compliance, according to that latest inspection. The website shows all 14 lakes, and identifies, enumerates the problems of each lake. I understand a report will be sent to Lennar, and I hope photos are sent, along with the actual words as well. I've requested via Freedom of Information to get a copy of what is sent to Lennar. I asked two questions. How long is allowed for compliance to be achieved? And then, secondly, what's the consequences of not getting into compliance? Those are two critical questions. We, as a community, need to know that when we reach out to the county for their action, that they have consequences for non-compliance. Lastly, I've received an answer about the streetlights on Griffin Drive. You all approved and budgeted for and contracted for those streetlights to be installed in May of 2017. It's now January. They've laid the power lines, okay? There's no streetlights. And I was told right before the meeting started, two more weeks. Two more weeks. We'll have a bottle of champagne here in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Since the Prado conveyances and the FPL easement area, which is, and then is, I believe that's I, 5I is the FPL easement, and it's also under District Council, and then we'll also include in that the tract L. So let's bring those three items up, and start with you, Tony.
Yes, I think my memos, which are in the front part, they're under District Council, under 3B, two little I, also should be part of, for the minutes we could make, and part of 5I, proposed eating of FPL easement lands in Gateway. And I think I made it... tried to just summarize briefly that in my recommendations, the board not accept any conveyance now, there are so many items that are needed. And if you can see also, going back to 2010, when the requests were first made for a number of these items. And this is a large tract of land with a lot of... large improvements on it, and there are a lot of issues. And even though it's for no consideration, as I mentioned in my email, my letter to Mr. Mann, I can't recommend to the board that they acquire the... I'm not picking a poke. And these are reasonable items to request from a party who's trying to convey a large parcel of land with substantial encumbrances and/or improvements on it, and conditions, to make sure there are no encroachments onto this site, and make sure there are no encroachments from this site onto another site, to make sure all the development orders have been complied with, in our... in conformance with all development orders. And, again, and the title policy, I mean, the argument that we have not required title policies for other conveyances, again, when the roads were deeded to Lee County, they were given no consideration, and Lee County required a million-dollar policy. When Gateway gave... did its roads to Lee County, they provided no consideration to Lee County. Lee County set a million-dollar title insurance policy, which is reasonable. And it's not expensive. It's not that expensive. Premium's about $5,000 in the overall scheme of things, from a standpoint of title insurance. So my recommendation is, as I've mentioned in the... my summary of my memorandum, is that the board not, at this time, accept the conveyance, and require the various documents listed in my recommendation from WCI.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Tony, is this the conveyance of 5K?
This is...
5I.
The FPL.
5I. 5I. And that's the only one you're speaking to?
At this time.
At this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't have anything to do with B, small i, small double i?
Yes.
No, it does not.
It doesn't? Update proposed conveyance of title.
Well, that's 2I, double I, double I. Correct. I'm assuming single I. Yes, I'm sorry, B2I. That's correct. It does. That's the same memo. The memo in B2I ties into the 5 capital I.
That's why all those documents were duplicated on the board book.
Yeah.
If you'd read them once, you'd love the second time.
I think they were tripled, exactly.
Tony, what is the issue if we were to just accept them? What are your concerns if we were to accept conveyance of the FPL easement?
Well, as I mentioned, typically with a survey, you find out what the improvements are, where encroachments are, if there are any improvements on this property that go onto somebody else's property, that we might be exposure liability for, or there are encroachments from others onto this property that can create a problem. And title insurance, I mean, a survey would disclose those encroachments, and they would be considered title defects that would need to be cured. And they typically are not covered by the title insurance that accept encroachments that are shown on a survey. Additionally, there are... in the Owners and Encumbrance Report, wasn't even complete. I found other documents separate and apart in Owners and Encumbrance Report that affect how the district can use that property by virtue of agreements with FPL. The FPL memorandums, and the FPL easements. And this issue about the pedestrian trail, and the patrol road, and all those items. So that's in it... I would not recommend a client buy a single-family home without having a survey, much less acquiring a multi-acre, long, wide parcel of land with high-voltage transmission lines on it, and water management features, and patrol roads, and everything else. And that's one from the survey perspective, and the title perspective. And again, these were asked for back seven years ago. And all they gave me, as far as the survey, was an eight-year-old survey, which is useless today. When you acquire a property, typically they want a survey within 90 days of the date of closing, to make sure there are no other impediments or issues. I don't know what development orders have been issued for all the improvements on here, and that they're all CC'd. We don't want to run into a situation that we've had before, where we acquire something, and we get a knock on the door from code enforcement going, "Somebody forgot to get a certificate of compliance or completion for those improvements. You need to do that."
Are... is there more than one owner here, or is...
Just one owner.
Lennar, WCI, the sole owner of this?
WCI is the sole owner. It's reflected by the Owners and Encumbrance Report, and from LIPA, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
I'm really going to rock the boat. What document says that these come to us?
I'm not aware of any that require it to come to us. I mean, I'm not... I mean, I don't recall. I mean, I...
The reason I ask is because I'm trying to get an answer, and I haven't gotten an answer now for six months. Is this a part of our park plan?
I believe it is.
It's a part of our park plan. I don't think we have any choice but to do it, and want to do it, because of the alternatives it presents us. We also, and we've talked about it in prior meetings, we got a real issue relative to the discharge of our wastewater in the summertime. This offers us an alternative place to put it. So it coming to us for those two reasons, the park and the getting rid of water, rather than putting it out on the street when it's raining four inches cats and dogs, makes a lot of sense. But I'm kind of like Tony on these... Charles Mann wrote something, and like Charles, good guy, I've used him before. But when he referred to us as the buyer, I don't know that we're buying. I think the proper term would be, we're the kind of the unloader. We're accepting this, but if we're getting it on the basis of a purchase, I can understand the... we would be paying for a, what do you call it? Survey. We'd be paying for a survey.
Typically, a buyer does.
The survey doesn't bother me as much as the title insurance does. That has me more concerned than the survey. If we had a survey that was six years ago, we've got pipes out there going across that line, or across that FPL easement, and numerous...
And ditches.
I'm sorry?
And ditches.
Ditches. Swales?
Yeah.
Okay. And ponds, and ponds. The issue is, how are those identified on the...
They're not, and it's a problem. A title opinion, a title report, excuse me, a title commitment would show all exceptions, including all easements. In the surveys, it would show all easements, and it would show all improvements.
Could the title opinion be done without the survey?
No, they would have an exception for items that would be shown by a survey. I mean, they could do it... you can get a title commitment and a title policy with a survey exception that says we don't protect you from anything that would have been disclosed by a survey. One other thing, too, on linear park, there's no assurance here that us, the district, accepting it would satisfy the linear park requirements, or it would satisfy the requirements of the DRI or the PUD as to the park. There's no documentation at all in this.
You lost me. What do you mean?
Well, you mentioned that we need to take, because it's a park.
Yeah, the PUD indicates that that...
But we have nothing from WCI saying, "This is part of the park, and this satisfies the park requirements."
Okay. Where I was leading you all this, is trying to get an idea of what is the dollar value to us as the buyer in doing both the... getting the title opinion and getting the survey? What's the dollar value of that? What are we talking about spending to get this done? To me, those are the two issues that keep this from happening.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Will someone remind me of the advantage to this board, taking title to 17 acres that are full of high-voltage power lines?
One, it's part of our park system.
Pardon?
One of it would be part of our park system.
Would be.
Yes.
But it won't be if we don't take title to it.
Well, then that creates issues, getting back to the PUD. We're not following what the PUD intended for Gateway. They carved it out.
But if we're not... we're not the developer that's responsible to...
Understand, but forget the deal of the, what do you call it, the linear park. Forget that. That's peanuts. We put so many restrictions on the damn thing, the only thing anybody can do is walk on it anyway. But that land is important to us for this wastewater, big time. Now, if there is a prohibition of us going in, out there, and putting in a pipe, and putting in golf course sprinkler heads to discharge that wastewater, the treated reuse water, then we got a problem. Because now, all of a sudden, it's used to us, it's really gone downhill. But I don't see that that's... well, there would have to be something in the agreement, I'm assuming, with FPL. To go out there and build a house, or a building, odds are that is taboo. They don't allow that.
There are a number of limitations and restrictions, and/or prohibitions, in the various FPL documents, and as to what can be built out there. And I don't have that memorized, by frankly.
We need... we certainly need an answer to that, because if we cannot use it for discharging that water, that would be a... that hurts us.
Well, it ought to be an advantage to us if we're going to take title to it, because sooner or later, there's going to be a disadvantage with all of that acreage and all of those high-voltage power lines.
Well, remember, what was it about... before I got on the board, we had the issue that we wanted to run gas up to the park. And the quickest way to get there was to gum up the FPL easement from over here on Griffin Drive. Just straight go up and in, and you're there. And as I recall, that... And as I recall, that couldn't be done because there was a prohibition with the FPL deal on a buried gas line. So I, it raises the question of what else is in there that we wouldn't be able to do? Now, there's a big difference between gas line and wastewater reuse. But to your point, Bill, I don't know what all the, the FPL conditions have that would limit us on what we can or what we can't do, but we certainly couldn't put in the gas line.
Mrs. Blart?
Yeah, I just have a question for the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with your memo, are you, what you're saying here is that Lennar, WCI, is not doing what they're responsible for, and it's their responsibility to do these things, and they're not doing them? That's what I'm getting from this.
What I'm saying is that, from the standpoint of, if WCI and Lennar is willing to convey for no consideration a substantial acreage encumbered by, you know, power lines, and the question is, from the standpoint of my guidance to the board as to what I think is a prudent transaction, is that, okay, we're acquiring this, but we're also requiring liabilities. We, to know what the liabilities are, a survey needs to be performed, and title insurance needs to be provided, and we need to know what development orders are out there, make sure they're all complied with before a decision is made to accept this property, to be the owner of the property, to have all those issues, to have both the liability and responsibility, as well as the pluses that go along with it.
What, what's entailed by trying to find out that development order issue?
Whether or not there are development orders where that were issued and not CC'd.
But a survey and/or a title opinion?
Would not, but that's separate, no, that's in addition, and I mean, that's-
But my question is, who does that? Who checks that? How do you find the answer to that question?
That could be part of the due diligence of the question, is usually, I would say, in this case, because, again, they're, they want to unload this property, they don't want to have it, they don't want the liability, that's my whole opinion.
Now you're talking.
And I could be wrong on that, and so, you know, there's a substantial advantage to WCI-Lennar to not, no longer own this property, and so I think it's been coming upon them to come forward and say, "Okay, there are no open development orders, there are no, everything's in compliance, and, and here's a title commitment, and here's a survey," and-
I'm fishing, you're not biting. Who would take to determine the compliance of the development orders? Move the title-
Once again, in a, in a transaction, either party can decide who's going to do that, and, you know, in a typical, in a commercial transaction where I'm buying something from you-
I'm trying to get this in.
I could say you do that, you, the seller, do that, or you can say you, the buyer, do it, it's negotiated.
Is that a, is that a legal task?
I think it's a negotiated matter.
But is it a legal task?
It's-
Performed by an attorney?
It could be an attorney and/or engineer, I would say.
Okay, then I would-
The survey, we're talking?
No, the checking on development orders, you know, checking with the county, sending in letters to the county, inquiring as to all development orders to try to track that down.
It doesn't sound like that's, we get back to the one I asked earlier, what's the cost of a title opinion, and what's the cost of the survey, because I think that's where we're at.
The title opinion for the roads, for example, the premium for that was $5,000 and change, for a million dollar policy, and that would be a reasonable coverage for any title insurance claims.
And the survey?
The survey, I don't know, that's-
Any idea, Danny, guess? I don't have a clue.
Ten, ten grand, fifteen grand?
And there might already be older surveys that just need to be updated, because I think Johnson Engineering did some surveying work when they were getting the certifications with South Florida, I believe there were some, because it shows locations of poles, and dimensions, and distances, so they may, they, WCI-Lennar may have already had some work done by an engineer.
If, if I knew definitively that we didn't have an issue of placing a reuse line on that property, that that was not an issue, I'd say, spend the money and get the title opinion, get the survey done, let's take that thing, because it is very advantageous to us. We're working ourselves into a corner on that wastewater, and we need a way out, and that's the only way out I see we got.
What I can do for the board is, for the next meeting, provide a copy of all those easements and do an analysis of what the limitations are, and a lot of them are pretty self-explanatory.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Tinkles seems to be our, not only our fellow board member, but our expert on, on these items, and if we're gonna, if we're going to get into what we're gonna, how we're gonna handle the wastewater, I'd like to have our engineer comment on that.
I wanted, I have staff come up, too, but first, I was gonna ask if Rhonda or Mr. Caldwell wanted to speak on this item. You'll give them their opportunity.
Good afternoon, board members, Happy New Year. I'm Dave Caldwell with WCI Communities, Lennar. I just wanted to cover some of the questions that board members and Tony has put out The original FPNL, you know, it's been there long before Gateway ever existed, it came with the property. It's 100% FPNL transmission easement. If anyone thinks it's other than an FPNL transmission easement, they don't know. It's 100% encumbered by FPNL. There are some other uses within that FPNL easement, and it was always shown within our Gateway PUD DRI as part of the park system. So that's where it comes about, under the original DRI. I don't know quite how to address Tony's question, I'm not a land use attorney in any form or shape, I guess we'll have Neil answer the, you know, somehow answer the question for Tony's benefit, as to, does this FPNL easement satisfy the requirements under the PUD? That should be easy enough to do. You know, why the district? There is no other entity, you know?
There's what, no what?
There, why does it, why is WCI offering, asking the district to accept the FPNL easement area? There's just no other entity, you know, there's no master association, I can't deed it to one of the neighborhood associations, you know, that, even if they wanted it, that wouldn't be the right thing to do. No, the district is the right entity to do it, you're a government entity, that's what you're in business to do, and you already have other parks, so it's quite consistent with what your, your operational charter is and what the DRI calls for, although it doesn't specifically state within the PUD that it goes to the Gateway Services District, but it's certainly implied. As to Ed's, Mr. Tinkles, I'm sorry, shouldn't be so informal.
Fine.
Mr. Tinkles' questions as to some of the water management or reuse water concerns, I think, I've thought about that in years past, when I was more actively involved with the development of the community. I've always thought that was an, an area over 100 acres to dispose of excess reuse water. I've never heard of any reason that can't be done, no official request has ever gone to FPNL to do so, but I don't know that they have a specific problem with that kind of use. There's already water management facilities in the FPNL easement, they were put there with specific requests from WCI years ago, decades ago, to FPNL, they approved it, they have constraints on how the water management can or should be constructed, so that there are certain distances between their facilities, installed facilities, and the actual water management facilities, so forth and so on. So if there were more desire for more water management, that's not out of the realm of possibilities. I say that only because WCI, about five or six years ago, maybe 10 years ago, got permission from FPNL to put in, I think, four more lakes in FPNL easement area, related to the Hampton Park, turns out, in fact, we started to dig some of those, we later changed our mind, filled in those excavations, there are no, those four lakes were never actually constructed, but FPNL had no problem with it at the time, and gave their permission to do so. So that, that kind of thing is certainly possible with FPNL, if the district wanted to inquire FPNL of some of these things preliminarily, as to, do you have a problem with reuse irrigation pipe out in that facility? You know, that kind of question, I can provide names of who to contact at FPNL, and either Tetra Tech or Tony could solicit that kind of question and answer from them, to garner your confidence that that's something you could do. Personally, I don't think they'll have a problem with spray irrigation. Ed, excuse me, Mr. Tinkles brought up the question of, you were turned down or denied the use of a gas line. I know in other requests we have had with FPNL over the years, they don't have problems with utility lines that run perpendicular to their high power lines, they have big problems with utility lines that run parallel with their utility lines, it's something to do with, you know, the transfer of energy from their lines into parallel lines, that apparently doesn't occur if it's perpendicular. You already have tons of utility lines that run perpendicular in Griffin Drive, Hampton, Hampton Park Entry Road, there are utility lines that run down that, all perpendicular to the FPNL. So those are, and as to the development orders, I think that's a good question that Tony has, WCI has requested development orders in that general area over the many decades, we ought to go through some process to make sure they're closed out and satisfied, I think that's something WCI ought to take a whack at and make sure that we've completed those. The two big questions that Tony has raised are quite legitimate, I understand, we buy a lot of land, we sell a lot of land over the years, we understand the importance of an ALTA survey, we, if we were buying a large piece of land, we would require that, and we would probably order it and pay for it ourselves if we were buying it, and we would expect if we were selling the property, the seller, whether it's a single-family home, or a large piece of land that we are selling, the seller typically takes that burden on. And that's just the way it is, it doesn't have to be, there's no ordinance, there's no law that says so. As to why WCI and the district furnished a survey for the road turnover to Lee County, it's a county ordinance, believe it or not, on conveyance of roads to the county, you, as the grantor, are required to furnish to the county an ALTA survey, so we comply with the ordinance. You don't have an ordinance, you don't have a code that requires that, so that, Tony asked for it, would let, you know, be nice, but it's an expense, and we didn't think we, as the party who wanted to provide the property, it should be our burden to do so. And there's some benefit in the fact if the, you know, the taker, the buyer, as it were, performs the work, then they control the vendor who does it, and have competence in their work, they get the reuse rights of that work, they get to specify just what they want or what they don't want, rather than it become a discussion or disappointment on the part of the taker or the purchaser, saying, "Well, the survey you gave us isn't what we wanted, what could you add to this, could you take that off," that kind of thing. So it eliminates some of the burden of getting a product not to your liking. If you control it and are paying for it, it's to your advantage. Certainly, there's an expense, but it's an expense that benefits you in the long run because it's material, if it's prepared right, you'll have a lifetime of use of that information, you can add it into your CAD system and use it to design things, whether it's part of your park or whatever.
Couple of things, David, this only goes from Griffin Drive to Gateway Boulevard, correct?
Correct.
We don't, we don't go southeast?
You don't go south of Griffin, you don't go north of Gateway Boulevard.
There's a map behind you.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure everybody understood that that, because there's other parts. The second thing is, we're really not taking an FPL easement, we're taking a title to a piece of land that has an easement on it.
Yeah, that's 100% encumbered by that easement, yeah.
And then the last was, and this would could muddy the water, we have two or three ponds in there, do we already own those ponds?
We already have easements for those.
We have it by easement?
Yeah.
So you do not own them?
Correct.
Right, we own the fee.
Okay.
Yeah. As to the title work, don't disagree that Tony found discrepancies in our O and E work, that's disappointing to me, it ought, it should have been accurate when we gave it to you, it wasn't. But I also understand why he would prefer a title commitment, because there's insurance related to that, so if there are deficiencies somehow in the title as years go by, you can make some kind of claim against the, the title insurance company. That being the case, in some, in most of our transaction is, is the seller, this would be, WCI does furnish a title commitment, in the same way we furnished a, an O and E report. We're willing to concede that we, we think it would be to the district's benefit, Tony's benefit, if he prepared the title commitment.
[laughing]
Only because if he finds exceptions and things he wants removed, it's easier for him to deal with it as he finds, goes through the title. There's all kinds of things that show up and, that you find in a title work that says, "Oh, this didn't, shouldn't be on the title exception list," and you want it struck, so it avoids that back and forth when he, he's the guy who's concerned about the title. So we would pay the premium for that title insurance.
Yeah, because the way that works is, if there's a hiccup down the road, it's found not to be marketable, if there's an issue arises, the property owner makes a claim on the title insurance policy, the title insurance company, and if we're an agent for the title insurance company, if the title insurance company has to pay it out, they'll come knocking on my door to get the money to pay them back for paying the claim.
But there won't be any errors.
No, there won't be, I'm always very fussy about those things.
Yes.
And a number of communities have been built that abut the FPL easement, and I think the concern that Tony has raised is, are there any encroachments onto the FPL easement that shouldn't have happened?
And vice versa.
And, and the FPL easement-
Improvements onto somebody else's property.
And again, I'm not disputing, disputing, you know, Tony's desire to have an ALTA survey. If I were in his shoes, I'd be saying the exact same thing, if I, you know, even if it was not the size of the property. All I'm saying is, it's to your, it's typical in the arrangements that we have with, you know, if we're selling the property, the buyer orders that boundary survey, ALTA survey, does his own survey, and at his expense, and I'm sort of putting you in the same category, we look at it as to your expense, if that's what you want. Some parties don't want, you know, we sell a house, that is a smaller scale thing, if we sell a house, a purchaser doesn't have to buy a survey, but if they want one, they pay for it.
We're going to do the same thing with the country club?
I understand.
Madam Chairman, so just so I'm clear, David, you're, WCI is willing to, to cover the, the title insurance-
Premium.
Premium, not willing to cover the ALTA survey. You are-
And we'll do the development order review-
Do the development order checks.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll check on the PUD requirement to make sure it's consistent and part of the DRI, PUD.
And where's the, like, the limit of use or the acceptable use for that area? Where's that specified?
Well, that's in the FPL easement that they have with the, that WCI, and Tony just shared a couple of the pages, and I couldn't find anything.
It's older than dirt. Well, that's an older one, a newer one, there's an older one, too, and if I may, Madam Chairman, from the standpoint of the survey, if I can ask David a question, David, did Johnson Engineering, when you all were getting certifications from South Florida for certain improvements, did they do a boundary survey? I think, if I recall correctly, it looked like in some of the South Florida permit materials, there was a, a survey that showed locations of poles, showed dimensions, showed all kinds of things, so I'm wondering, did Johnson Engineering do a survey of that easement area, if you recall?
I, and simple answer is, I really don't know, as, you know, what you want versus what Johnson did, probably doesn't exist. What does exist is specific surveys that they may have done, needed to do, is the engineering related to water management, so it might have been a portion of the FPNL easement, not the whole thing.
I think that's exactly right. I think it was for that 1,600-foot run on the 60-inch pipe that was empty.
Right.
I think you're right, I think that, that was the one.
So it would be in bits and pieces, that's to, if you, you know, assuming they have the information in their CAD system, that would be very useful and easily attainable and reusable, and reduce any expense for a new survey.
Yeah, and Madam Chairman, that's why I was asking the question, because if it's updated, you know, they go in the field and they update an older survey, a lot of times it's less, less of a cost.
David, is you understanding that the 100 and, I don't know what it was, 136, 142 acres, something like that, that describes this, was all of that meant to be less the easements, where we got water lines, gas lines, whatever, and the lakes, the ponds, was all of that meant to be- of that meant to be part?
Yeah. It's all, it's a gross area and includes all of those existing utilities and lakes. So if you think of it as a big rectangle.
Yeah, big rectangle.
David, last question. And this kind of speaks to a question that Supervisor Guy had. Other than the water displacement, I don't know if that's exactly what you, how you, the terminology, but other than that, in your opinion, what additional benefit does this plot have to the district, either existing or future?
Well, I'd...
I mean, from your perspective, I'm just looking for...
The, I, there's a walking trail, bike trail, that runs the length of the FPL. And I know a lot of residents use that for exercise or just whatever you might want to call, but they use it. It's, and then just open space, you know, it's desirable from, from that perspective. It has very limited use. I mean, you don't plan on, although I shouldn't say this, oh, I will say this. I've seen in other FPL transmission easement uses, some recreational, where if maybe you want to put in tennis courts or, or pickleball or those kind of things. The issue FPL has is, as long as you keep your facilities 14, not higher than 14 feet from existing grade, and that, whatever it is, being fencing, the courts, lighting, whatever, they generally will sign off, plus you meet horizontal distances from their towers. So if there's some green space out there right now, that does have usable, some use to it, if you can come up with a use that complies with FPL's restrictions.
Do we know who's maintaining the areas that aren't open? I know there's wooded areas in there that probably have invasives.
They've been cleaned. They cleaned them up.
Yeah, we removed the invasive.
But who did that? You did it. WCI did it. That's what I wanted to know. I wondered, who did that cleaning?
Yeah, we did that.
The only concern I saw and have, and I guess Tony hit on it, was the issue of, for example, Hampton Park. And this came up in the code enforcement description. We had basically an escarpment from the Hampton Park over into the FPL easement. I mean, it was a sheer drop-off, 3, 4, what, 3, 4 feet, Mike, when we were walking along there, easily. And so is that allowable or does that have to have a transition? I wouldn't want somebody to come back and tell us, "You've got to go back and put that, reslope that." But other than that, to me, unless there is a specific prohibition, and we didn't see it, against that reuse, that reuse is critical.
And the, and the paper that, the extension, did WCI, when you did the, the lakes that were covered, towards the end, towards Gateway Boulevard, up towards Stony Brook?
The three that were dropped out?
The three that were dropped out. That paved road was, was that WCI or did FPL?
I don't know who did that road.
Did you guys do the road or FPL? No, we, as to the asphalt paving?
Yes, the asphalt paving.
We did that.
And, and so there's a, there's a stop between there and it's, what?
100 yards.
Yeah.
I don't even know.
I was told that it stops at the Gateway Boulevard right-of-way line, that, at that...
That, that could be.
So that's where the rock?
That could be. That could be. Yeah.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Questions for our attorney. In the event that we obtain title to this property, and in the event that young people ride their ATVs in this property and play paintball and otherwise interfere with the comfort of residents, that's going to be our problem. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. For enforcement purposes. For enforcement purposes and also liability purposes.
So, so Madam Chairman, if it pleased the board, I'd like to see a list of the advantages of taking this property versus a list of disadvantages of taking this property, because I think there's plenty on the negative side.
I'm going to assume if anybody gets hurt back there, if we've created a linear park, that's on us too.
Well, that would be...
That was a PUD issue though. That was way before our time. Somebody else decided that that was going to be done, not us.
Well, I think...
If we own time.
We own it?
They always go after the owner first, and they go after anybody, they join as many people as they can.
Somebody comes over there and gets shot in that soccer field, we're going to get it. That's life. That's just going to happen.
And we have, what's going, there's a limited waiver of sovereign immunity. We have insurance.
Yeah, you get those things covered. Bill, my only problem with that is that that doesn't weigh in. Don't take my word for it. Talk to Danny. Talk to Chris. You cannot believe the seriousness of the reuse issue.
Say again?
You cannot believe the seriousness of the reuse issue.
Well...
It's a contractual issue that we have to take that water. And in the summertime, we've been dumping it historically on basically the road right-of-way. That's where we get rid of it all. And it makes it a mess. One of these days, with the county owning, they're going to come back and say, "No more of that, guys. It's raining. Don't dump it."
You're saying that that's just some more money we're going to have to spend to take care of this.
We bought that when we agreed to take 100% of the deal. But I don't think you can monetarily do a pros and cons. That's what I'm saying. I don't think you can do it.
I, I think that what Bill's asking for isn't an unreasonable thing, because there are reasons why we should take it and reasons why we shouldn't. And it doesn't have to be a dollar value. It's just concepts. And I asked the staff, want to address this. I'm going to, I'm just going to put this out there for now. This isn't something we're going to vote on today, whether we're going to take it or not, because we've still got a lot of open questions out there that have to be answered prior to this being addressed. And a pros and cons is a good idea. Staff, does staff want to address any of the things they've heard today or give their opinion on assuming this property?
We can start putting a list together like that. When I was with Tornado County Utilities, I actually purchased 26 acres of power line easement because we were putting a linear well field in. And the restrictions that we had there were above ground over 14 feet. And we actually entered into some agreements with some developers to allow them to put their ponds on that property for a price. And we also sold some easements crossing it because it was our fee simple property and it didn't interfere with Florida Power's easement. But at the same time, you have somebody on a four-wheeler that hits one of those towers. You'd be liable for it because you're the property owner. So there is a liability issue.
You didn't have drone flyers when you were going out there.
And I think... There's positives and negatives. We could certainly come up with a pretty, pretty list.
I think we ought to see it.
And I think we need to address the issue on whether or not we would accept with or without a survey.
Well, I, I thought you were leading to that, and I was going along with you. I totally believe that the survey is, is on our deal. And everything else you were saying, I go with. I agree. I don't have any problem with that at all. It's part of doing business.
And I guess as part of, part of this discussion, in addition to drawing up pros, cons, advantages, disadvantages, operationally and otherwise, would the board give direction to the staff to also get estimates for the surveying work? And also ask David and Rhonda if we could talk to Johnson, oh, there you are, David, I'm sorry. Johnson Engineering or any other engineering firm, your all have views, to see if they can do an update, you know?
I have no problem. Feel free to talk to Andy or whoever.
And then one person make contact with FPL to just verify that that reuse is not an issue.
Yeah. I, I can provide whoever, I'll provide Chris with the name of the contact to we deal with at FPL.
Please do.
So if I'm clear, the kind of order of operation would be direct staff to put a recommendation brief together. And once that happens, and get in touch with FPL.
And Johnson.
And Johnson. Bring that back. We would make a determination on whether we have an inclination to proceed with, with adoption. And then at that point, if we are leaning in that direction, then we're going to vote on whether to proceed with the survey, right? So I think we need a consensus on whether we would do it before we issue the survey.
And also authorize, tell a committee and all the things that go along with it.
If the FPL does not have a prohibition against the reuse, I'll make the motion to do that. It's that serious.
Also finding out from Johnson if they can update what they've, the work they've already done and how much that would cost. And if they can, we need an idea of how much it would cost to do the whole thing. And maybe get an idea from more than one different, more than one firm on how much they charge us to do that.
The thing is a straight line. I mean, it's really, it's simple surveying. It's not complicated.
Once again, there are some other issues. If you look at the easement issue about if FPL wants to redo its electrical facilities, whether or not we have to redo our ponds at our expense. But that's part of the pros and cons in the recommendation brief.
Sure.
And Dave?
I will point out that Tony makes a good point. The FPL sort of is the 800-pound gorilla in this particular room, you know, and they, under their easement rights, they have broad powers, even the, if you're the landowner. But in the last year or two, they added new transmission towers, new lines, and not once did they ask us as landowner, "Oh, you've got to move some." You know, they figured out a way to make it all work.
Which I think they had an initial obligation, but then if they can't, then...
And there, you, when you first stood up, you had a list of a couple of things that you were also going to look into and get.
Yeah, I'm, I'll follow up with the development order and the DRI issue that Tony had mentioned.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. That takes care of...
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes care of 5I. You want to go to 5K, Tony?
I guess from my perspective, 5K, I think my recommendation to the board is, it's not a complete package yet. Even Charles Mann's letter says, "Note, these turnover materials do not include the landscaping documents needed from the Pelican Reserve Community Association. The Avila Condominium Association or WCI is still working on that." And those, some of those documents have been awaited, have been awaiting those since November 2012. The Cypress Grove conveyance has been a package that they did at Phase 1, November 2012, raised a number of issues. They did Phase 2, I think in 2015. We had other issues. I would suggest that, that the board not consider the tractile conveyance until such time as we have, the staff has a complete package to review and then come forward with one package. Doing something piecemeal provides the opportunity for duplication of effort, which means duplication of cost as well as overlooking something, if you're not seeing everything at one time.
Now, in the, the documents that Charles Mann is seeking is from, only from Avila? That's the only thing that's left?
No, Pelican Reserve Community Association also, if you look, this letter references, because what happened, as I understand it, David couldn't correct me if I'm wrong, some of landscaping went outside the road right-of-way. Because if you look at some of the graphics, it's not a straight line. It kind of zigzags in and outside the right-of-way. And the Avila Condominium Association actually has, owns part of the area in which landscape improvements are located. And that was first raised back, again, as I said, November, October of 2012 as an issue. For example, if you look at page 283, you see how you have the Cypress Grove Drive is pretty straightforward, curvilinear. Then you see all the little jagged areas outside that. That's outside the road right-of-way. So those easements are needed to be obtained. And Charles's last paragraph...
I mean, that's where they've installed landscaping, which...
Correct. They want us to acquire it.
Okay. They want us to acquire it, but they're, they're giving us that as an easement, not as a fee simple?
Correct. And the last paragraph of his letter, which is on page 269, said, "These turnover materials do not include the landscape maintenance easements and related documents needed from the Pelican Reserve Community Association, Inc., and the Avila at Sun City Center's Fort Mars Condominium Association, Inc. And WCI is still working on obtaining those items and submitting them to separate cover." Once again, I don't like to do things piecemeal. I think I would suggest the board wait until we get a complete package.
My question on that. Phil, were you on point on this issue earlier? That's what you're talking about. Okay. I can see us be back here in two weeks, or three weeks, or six weeks, and we're going to be discussing what you brought up. So how are we going to address that while we're addressing these others? I, I don't want to sit here and kick this can down the road and be talking about this again and again. How are we addressing these issues of broken curb plants? And first of all, do we have, within the last seven days, a list that summarizes what we're talking about here? How many deficiencies do we have? And then go back to Rhonda or Dave, and how are these going to be handled as a part of this? Because if those are going to be the Achilles' heel on this, let's get this thing out right now and talk about it and get it done.
I'm going to turn to staff on this one. Has, have staff gone out there and reviewed these areas?
We, we have previously with Casella, not these ones so much. I do have Mr. Schofield's documents that he provided here. I did not print them. And, and we had anticipated Mr. Mann having those additional materials ready. That's why it's still on the agenda. And when they weren't, we had, we were planning on moving forward. Hence, Tony is dealing with an incomplete package. But my position, we're looking at it, is we can go out and investigate it. But what we have, according to procedures manual, is a punch list from engineer at a time certain. And that's what was submitted, these issues have come up after that time. So...
Does our manual call out a time of ali-ali, all-in, free on things?
Not to my knowledge. And again, I go back to, it's not in this packet because it would take up another 50 or 100 pages. The first package for Cypress Grove came in, in the fall of 2012, I think in October. I think my memorandum was like November of 2012, that pointed out a number of issues, which have still outstanding from five years ago.
That didn't allow us to close it.
From Phase 1. And then they submitted Phase 2. And I said, "What are we doing? We're doing Phase 2 without Phase 1 even being wrapped up." And the Avila Condominium easement was way back, if I recall correctly, back in my first review, back in, over five years ago. And, and so the whole idea about getting back to the question too, is what, at what point in time does the district want to have this benchmark for any landscaping improvements at the time of conveyance, in my opinion? I think the board can require that.
That's where I was going. Why can't we take, authorize one last run-through by either staff or, or engineer, or both, utilizing the documentations from PP and any of the other residents that have put this together as a, a deal with checkpoint, develop that, come back and indicate, "These are the ones that have to be done to make this thing happen," notwithstanding these other issues that Charles is going to be preparing these easements and all the other things. And draw a line in sand and say, "If this isn't done in 30 days, 60 days, whatever a reasonable number is, it ain't going to happen." And get this over with, because we're going to be sat here talking about the same dag-on thing two weeks from now. We need to get it, we need to get it finalized. Now, to me, I don't have a definition of how lengthy the problem is. I don't have a clue.
The, I have more of a concern with broken curbing than I actually do landscaping, although I understand it is a concern for Pelican Reserve. Most of the time, developers overplant what the requirements are. So we need to be really careful that if, if what is required...
Find the plans.
If what is required is there and more...
I agree.
That'll be harder to make requests on.
I totally agree with you. That is the case. But the other things that are the more difficult things, the broken concrete and that type of issue, I think we should have those delineated and get that done and be done with it. I don't know whether we're talking about a $5,000 fix or a $105,000 fix. I, I don't have a clue on this. What's, what's the order of magnitude of what it takes to fix this, to get it into a position to get it done? But to me, Charles brings in, and if he would walk in the door in the next five minutes and bring in the easements, what are we going to be talking about? This very issue. So let's get it done. Get it resolved.
Would you like to speak? I kind of figured you would.
Rhonda Brewer with Lennar, WCI. So what I have here, I'm just going to pass out a couple of exhibits for the board. What this is, is showing you a map of the tractile roadways that were processed and conveyed. So graphically, you can see. Okay. Just to address the, the issue with the package. The package is mostly complete with the exception of Avila. We've tried over the last several months to contact the Avila Homeowners Association to get them to sign documents that would give GAs... to get them to sign documents that would give GSD a grant of easement so that you all could maintain the landscaping. They have yet to sign that. And so one suggestion I have for the board is rather continuing to delay this, because that's not favorable for us, is that you accept everything else that's in the package, with the exception of Avila. And if they don't sign the documents within the next 30 days, then they can, they can own and maintain it. And the GSD wouldn't be burned with that. So I wrote on here Avila, right here on the plan, which is where we're talking about. It's just a little snippet of land right there. So we could move forward with accepting everything else, with the exception of that portion. In regards to the landscaping comments, and these are comments that we've heard previously, but as a reminder to the board, I also went ahead and had snapshots taken of the landscaping as of today, all along Cypress Grove Drive.
When the freeze comes tonight, it'll all be dead tomorrow anyway.
Well, actually, this landscaping's been in for the last several years. Cypress Grove Drive, which is where the bulk of the landscaping is in the right-of-way, a lot of that was installed beginning in, I think, 2012, 2013. So these improvements have been installed for many years, and they far exceed the code minimum requirements. So from a landscape, meeting the requirement, the plans that we've installed, they far exceed that. So it's, it's difficult to go back and say that we're not meeting a requirement when it's all enhanced landscaping.
Rhonda, you got Avila written on there, but as I recall, that's the golf course, isn't it? Why would that be Avila? Isn't that the first hole on the golf course?
No, it's the corner of Pelican Reserve Boulevard and Cypress Grove, after scrub.
Here, Dave.
I was just thinking that was where the first hole. Saying that where the first hole was.
It's right there.
It's part of the first hole.
Oh, she's showing on the other side of the road. Okay, I'm sorry.
You see it, Ed?
Yeah, I see it. It's on the south side of the road. Okay. North side of the road is golf course.
That's good.
Okay.
If you have any technical questions, too, I do have my two engineers from RWA and Waldrop Engineering, who both engineered and permitted these two areas. But I just want to remind the board a brief timeline. We final paved Cypress Grove Drive in early 2016. We sent in all of our engineering documentation to Tetra Tech. We walked that extensively with Tetra Tech, along with P-PAC. You recently approved the storm drainage system a few weeks ago for tractile. So this is now the paving components. So P-PAC was involved. There was an email that was generated, you'll see in your package, from May 11th, 2016, of which P-PAC was copied on from Tetra Tech, saying that we have complied with all the punch list requirements. So everything was done as of that date. There's an additional memo by Tetra Tech dated August 24th of 2016, which identifies a wish list that P-PAC would like, which is not consistent with what was designed, engineered, permitted by the city of Fort Myers, and it's not consistent with the permit criteria manual. It's simply that. It's a wish list of five items, but we've complied, you know, with the construction plans that were approved by the city of Fort Myers, the permit criteria manual, we have Tetra Tech approval, we've got enhanced landscaping plans. So it has taken us, you know, 18 months to get to this point. And again, that's the recurring theme with some of these older projects that we've been trying to work through the process, is that by the time we go out and we do a punch list to the time that we get to the board for approval. So it's, it's no different than the other ones that you have recently approved. The other thing that I just wanted to remind the board of is that you do have a bond in place. There's $1.6 million of a total bond, of which $290,000 is for Cypress Grove Drive. So when, when the project gets accepted, that bond would then get reduced down to 10% and the board, the GSD, would have it for three years to cover any defects.
And you said that that's for Cypress Grove Drive. What about the other ones, Karina, Azura, Materita, as far as the bond?
This is the full breakdown right here. So some of the older sections, bonds weren't required at that time, under the permit criteria manual. You have a current bond in place for $1.6 million. $290,000 is for Cypress Grove, and then the balance of it is for Materita Phase 4.
Which is not this. It's not Materita Drive that you're wanting us to take as part of the tractile. This is the continuation of Materita.
I thought it was everything in gold.
It's everything in gold, but the bond that's in place right now covers the, covers Cypress Grove Drive for $289,000.
But not the others.
That's what I have for, for this, for Materita Phase 4.
If, if we would take, if, if we would take this, notwithstanding the landscaping, that landscaping, it'll be a long time before that ever gets argued out. But if we would take this tonight, could take this tonight, we go to that bonding company tomorrow and have them repair all of the cracks and all the, all the breaks that occurred since the write-off of, would you say, May or June? I'm afraid my experience will be is they're going to come back and say, uh-uh, that was a owner responsibility to do before you accepted it, and the bond's not going to cover that. What, what's your opinion on that?
Well, my opinion is...
Because that bond is worthless to us if that, if they react that way.
My opinion is, is that we've complied with all the criteria. We've complied with the punch list. You know, it's, it's no different than the other submittals and conveyances that we had. This is similar to like Casella, you know, where it's, it's taken a while to get to this point. The other thing I want to remind the board is that typically, the developer doesn't fund ongoing maintenance obligations. But, you know, WCI, for whatever reason, they chose to fund the maintenance of all this landscaping over the last several years, while also subsequently deficit funding the Master Homeowner Association. And so that's just not something that we're going to be able to continue to do on a go-forward basis, is to continue to fund ongoing maintenance. So there's been, you know, somewhat of a free ride there for the last several years. We can't, and again, we cannot keep going back and generating additional punch lists. We need to start the clock on this bond. It's a three-year bond. If there is a defect, if there's a warranty defect, that's something that, that we'll address. It's not like we wouldn't address it, because we don't want to have bonds called. And every time we've been given a punch list item, we comply with it.
Let me follow up on that. If we prepare a punch list and it has more items than, that were identified May or June of that last one you referred to, what's going to happen?
I would say that the time to generate the punch list is at the time that you're going to release the final release of the bond, which is when you typically do that. So we, we get an acceptance, then we get the bond reduced. Then when we approach that three-year mark, you know, maybe six months out, if it takes a little while, we would do that final walkthrough with Tetra Tech or your district engineer, and we would identify if there's any deficiencies.
So what would you do, before and after video?
Well, you've suggested that before.
Because you've got cracks, what happens to cracks and things that would occur in the interim?
That's why I think you do the walkthrough right before the, the three-year, because we're motivated to get that, you know, bond released, so that the punch list is what generates that.
So in essence, it's a conditional acceptance. It's conditioned upon, at the end of the three years of releasing the bond, you're going to come in and do this, 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 and this to fix all these things, to avoid pushing the bond company.
Again, you know, people come up here and say, there's all these things. But we operate off of a punch list that's generated by your district engineer. So the process is, is that we get the acceptance tonight. That starts the clock on the three-year bond. And then six months before that bond is due, we'll do the final walkthrough with your district engineer. He'll generate a final punch list. We'll perform to it. And then they have to rewalk it again, and then they'll say it's good, and then we can get the bond released.
Okay, I'm a newbie here. How have boards in the past, not, not, not that I'm not interested in what you're saying, Rhonda, I want to hear from the other side. How have boards done this in the past? Has there had to be 100% compliance and all defects repaired at the time of the acceptance? Or have we allowed this to go down to the end of the bond and be addressed?
And I'll let that question be addressed, but Mrs. Flaherty had a couple of questions, so I'm going to turn...
Because that's critical to me. I don't, I don't know how you do it otherwise.
Hi.
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
According to the attorney, attorney, all the paperwork is not in, okay? And you admit that there isn't some papers that aren't signed off by the HOA, okay?
Avila HOA.
Right. Isn't it your responsibility to make sure that all those things are signed? Shouldn't you be doing something else to get it signed? So therefore, all the paperwork would be in. I'm confused. I always thought, since you're doing that and it is your responsibility, why would you come to us and say, well, except for this? And I think that if you're coming to us, you should have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed and say, yes, we did what we were supposed to do, and say, well, except. I'm just concerned about that.
So we've made every reasonable effort to work with them and have them sign off on the paperwork, but we can't wait forever. So I think, you know, a go-forward solution is that it's accepted without that piece. And once they realize that they're going to be on the hook to maintain it, they might be more motivated to sign the grant of easement over.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Rhonda, as I'm looking at the map...
Yes.
Have all of the roads that are in gold received their second lift, their final lift?
Yes.
Phil, would you say it again? I'm sorry.
Have all these roads received their final asphalt lift?
And, and they have?
Yes, they have.
I'll ask the question, since you said that your engineer is here, I'll ask him the question to answer, why is the asphalt, why is the concrete curbing breaking out the way that it is?
Okay, in which section? Because I have two engineers that represent different sections.
Safe answers, both.
And I don't have the evidence of breaking curbs.
Safe answers, both.
I, on these particular, on Cypress Grove Drive, do we have broken concrete on Cypress Grove Drive?
Yes.
Okay, let's start there. Who would be, answer the question about the con, broken concrete on Cypress Grove?
You know, they both worked on Cypress Grove Drive. Where, we've already done a punch list. He's not an engineer. We have to work off your district engineer. And your district engineer says it's ready for acceptance.
Rhonda, let's go this way. This punch list that we prepared, our engineer prepared, three months, five months, six months ago, have all the defects on it been taken care of?
Yes, as...
They're done. 100%.
As illustrated in your memos, in your packet, by Tetra Tech.
So we're talking about defects that have occurred since the repair of the defects identified in the punch list?
Well, it's either since, or it's not in the realm of what would be considered a defect. I mean, you have to be careful about a resident saying there's a defect versus what your engineer considers is a defect.
Well, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt on the break in the concrete. I think that's a defect, but go ahead.
John Williams from RWA, and happy new year as well. And thank you for letting us address this, these issues. You know, Pelican Reserve, when Cypress Grove was originally designed and permitted and constructed, we then did a walkthrough with the city of Fort Myers. We had a punch list with the city of Fort Myers. We finished the punch list with the city of Fort Myers. And at that time, they let us reduce the bond with the city of Fort Myers, within those areas. Then we did, again, we did a walkthrough with Gateway. And in the design criteria manual, right in the checklist, we have to do a post walkthrough and a pre-post walkthrough to identify any punch lists. We have to have the punch lists taken care of before we can even submit the final acceptance package for acceptance. So as Rhonda said, we had gone through one punch list, another punch list, then the third punch list. We've completed the fourth punch list before even submitting to you guys. So now, the defects that have occurred today, I'm not sure exactly where they are. I haven't seen any of the documentation. But as Rhonda said, when we walked it at the time with Tetra Tech, in May of 16, all defects were taken care of. And as she's saying, when does the clock stop in the responsibility of them?
John, let me, let me stop you right there, because I'm, I'm wearing the same hat you did. The issue is, I, you're admirably doing your position. But it's like, you come in and you got a checklist of five items. What you're telling me is the four that you were responsible for and talking about were indeed done. It's the fifth one, which kept it from being accepted, caused the problem. And that's putting us in, that's putting us in a box.
Right.
Which are these legal documents that we're talking about. And that is all part of the same deal. You can't separate those out. You can't separate those out. We can't be in the position of accepting four fifths of it, because you have four of the five items on the checklist. The critical item was, is this one that we're talking about with Charles, that still is outstanding. We don't have that, and we didn't have that then. So it just keeps that timeline moving down the way. And I, I don't see any other way around it. I just don't see any other way around it. My, my bigger thing was, is that I want to verify that the punch list that you and Danny agreed on at that time has definitively been done. It's accepted, or it's been accepted. And these items that are identified as now punch list items or defects are new defects that have occurred, thank you. That are new defects that have occurred in the interim, because we've had to wait. I don't know the answer to that.
I go along with your second, the second comment. Yes. We wouldn't take out the district engineer out on site without taking care of those defects. You know, we wouldn't put a final lift of asphalt down without taking care of those curb defects.
So you're of the opinion that at the time, you did the original, what we call punch list, and then came back on the pre-final that, that had been completed, you were the opinion that this thing was ready to fly, not realizing that there was another fly in the ointment, and that was somebody else's deal, of i.e. the easements and some of the legal issues that didn't allow this thing to get accepted. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes and no.
I understand the yes part. What's the no part?
I mean, the no part is, is that when was the legal documents submitted as well?
They haven't been submitted yet. That's what I think we're saying.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, if I may, just on that, I pulled up my memo from August of 2016. And I did not include all this in this packet, but it talks about the background. The original submittal by WCI as to then Cypress Grove Phase 1 landscaping was made on October 15th, 2012. My, my comments to that submittal were provided by memorandum dated November 1st, 2012. Nothing happened. By letter dated March 24th, 2014, WCI submitted a packet of materials for Pelican Reserve Cypress Grove Drive right of way. I'll call it the 2014 submittal. It was suggested that WCI be advised the issues relating to the first phase from October 2012 need to be resolved before review of the second phase. And then there's a question about in October 2015, whether there'd be a partial submittal. And then there was a 2016 submittal. So this has been going on for five years. And I guess my concern is, a number of questions are being raised today that need, I think, to be addressed for the board to have a complete packet in front of it to make a decision as to how to proceed. This has been piecemeal for over five years. And that's what I'm saying. And John, I think, was aware of all these memos way back when.
Right, okay, so...
And some of these issues are lingering from five years ago, five and a half.
So, okay, so in 2017, you accepted the drainage.
The district accepted some of the drainage.
Correct, okay. So, you're now willing to accept another portion of it? We're talking about.
It's up to the board, not me.
No, no, I get you.
And the recommendation is, accepting your road right of way, landscaping, irrigation, and streetlights, which has been hanging for over five years, suffering apart from drainage, and that's a board decision. I just give them advice.
Go ahead.
Okay. The defects that they're showing up now, are they the same defects that were before, and they were repaired, and now they're just showing up again?
I can't answer that question, because I'm not sure what those defects are today, and I don't know where they are associated with it, you know, from May of '16. You know what I mean? I would be happy to look at it and tell you if it was a defect and stuff like that, that is reoccurring, okay? But, I would say that, you know, my staff walked it at that time in '16, and everything was in order and which was ready for acceptance.
Right, and I was just wondering if, when you did repair, okay, in '16, if those repairs now are the defects, so, then the repair wasn't done correctly, so I'm thinking that if that's a defect, it will keep reoccurring, and that's my concern.
No, and I appreciate that. I mean, my client's going to have to direct me to look at those defects if they so desire, right? And then, we can determine, yes, no, maybe, what there was, you know? Maybe, it's probably in your best interest to have your engineer look at those defects and see if they're the same ones from the original punch list, you know, in your case, I would think.
Thank you.
I think the problem we have here, the issue we have here is, unlike most of our communities where the roads are private roads, these are public roads, and as I understand it, these are public roads that fall under what the O-2 fund?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about bond issue.
No, no, no. I'm out of my league on that.
O-02, maybe?
O-02. So, if we would accept these, if we would accept these, right now, carte blanche, based upon the last approved punch list, then one of two things got to happen. Between now and three years on the bond, somebody's got to agree to fix them, I guess one of three things. Somebody's got to agree to fix them on your part, we go to the bond, and/or the O-02 fund eats them, the repairs. Or I guess there's a fourth, we do nothing. Are those the scenarios that we're in? Do you see, where I'm coming from is that, it's sort of like when you throw a football, two things can hap, or three things can happen, and two of them are bad. That's what we've got.
All I can say is that, over the last several years, you know, that I've been involved, I can't talk about '08 and all that, because I wasn't involved. But when we get a punch list, we perform to it. We have not, in any case, over these last several years since I've been involved, say, we're not doing that. We're motivated to do the right thing, and make Gateway happy, and comply with the punch list.
Mr. Banks, if you have.
Yeah, so.
We've got to get this answered.
It's our council's opinion not to accept. Engineering, what's district engineer, what is your opinion? Do you have an opinion whether to accept or not accept at this time?
For the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Mr. Tinkle raises a, you know, a good point. From when our punch list was repaired, it's now been, you know, a year and a half, year and three quarters. I have, I'm not familiar with what the damage that we're talking about today versus what was on that punch list, and have these items reoccurred versus are these new items. So, I mean, personally, I would like to see what those are and to compare the two. But, the point that Mr. Tinkle brings up is a valid, and I guess that's for the board, is, is do we consider all physical improvements closed out, and that four fifths closed out, once that punch list is complete, and then the legal issues are completely separate? So, officially, you have not accepted anything, so that's definitely a valid point, that that's still open. So, I mean, personally, I think, you know, seeing what the list is, and going out there with, you know, with P-PAC, with the developer, with their engineer, with staff, and looking at all of these and agreeing on it, is probably where we're at. Because it doesn't sound like we're at a point where you can accept it today anyhow, because you don't have all the legal documentation.
Yeah, that legal issue buys us time to do what you just described, to me, is the next best thing to do. Find out what this, because Kathy makes a good point. If one of the failures is a re-failure of something that was repaired, then we've got an issue. But, my guess is, it's new defects that normally occur. You've got construction going, you've got construction equipment, this stuff breaks, it's that simple. So, come up with a new list. My problem is, if we come up with that list, what are we going to agree to do with it?
Well, we don't know until we see what that list is.
Yeah.
And again, as you've mentioned earlier, are we talking about $5,000, or are we talking about $100,000?
So, let me just finish.
So, at this time, you cannot make a recommendation to approve without further investigation or due diligence on your part?
Correct.
Correct. Chris, from a staff perspective, what is staff's recommendation to accept at this time?
Well, the recommendation was, I was really bringing it to the board, so that these questions would come out, because they impede our progress in the past, and defect didn't like what I heard you say, because I said, you don't have any standing punch lists, it's a year and a half old, what you have, and you know, I'm not going to bring it to the board. But at the same time, you know, some things have happened, curbs have been cracked, you know, it's a year and a half later, so a different situation. I do not think that the defects that were fixed first are the ones that are popping up. That was mostly storm drain, and things related to that. We had to either clean them out or fix the casket. Things now are a little different, mostly cracked curb and road rage.
How quick, if we do this, how quick can we be assured that the other non-engineering construction issues, i.e. legal, will be done, so that we're not doing this six months from now? Will Charles, notwithstanding the issue with Avila, because I think Avila's Pinecrest all over again, that dog ain't going to hunt. If they don't want us to take it, great, we want to take it. Let them hang out there. But, the other things, can the legal stuff be done, let's say, in two weeks?
You know, just the legal documents from the Pelican Preserve Community Association were approved by the board about a week ago, signed, actually before Christmas, well, it's probably a week there, before Christmas, have been delivered to Charles Mann, and because he was off for the holidays, they haven't been delivered to the district. So, the only thing not done is Avila.
So, okay, that's the one I'm talking about, that you're having, that there's a problem with? It's the same problem we ran with Pinecrest. So, why wouldn't we be able to, two weeks, do this?
If it's made clear to Avila that it's going to become their responsibility, I think that that probably light a fire under them.
Didn't Pinecrest.
Madam Chairman, I would also suggest that Charles and his documentation also pull out those segments that are in the Avila condominium area. And so, right now, the record indicates areas.
So, Dave, you're of the opinion that the legal is just a matter of timing, that in two weeks, you could be back and have that part solved? Let's just move with getting the engineering done, and then we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the engineering is done.
Yeah, so, that's what I think I'm hearing, is regardless if our engineers go out and they find additional defects that are outside of the punch list, it's WCI's position that they will not fix those items, regardless of the gap in time.
Well, then, my deal would be, then, we'll make a phone call to the bonding company, because our only choice then, is we ignore them, or the residents pick up the tab for them, or we get the bond company to do it. There's none other option, is there? I don't know of any.
And Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is that, as opposed to continuing this for two weeks, because that means we have to have all our reports in by next Tuesday.
That's true.
That it be the first meeting in February. That way, we can get the materials from Charles, repair away from it, and not have a fire drill.
And, yeah, so that's going to allow, I'd like to hear from staff and the engineer if they consider these significant defects, if they're like reoccurrences of repairs. If, I'd like to hear from staff and the engineer what they found, when they go out there and inspect.
And you want to estimate, too, right? Or at least the swag?
Yeah, you need a before and after, and the ones that, Tetra Tech did the original, so they at least know what they had written before. And can verify the question that Kathy had, is it a repeat, or is it truly a new one? If it is a new one, and it falls in this area that Rhonda was talking about, in this 15, 18-month period, and it's in no man's land, it's going to be back to us, just so that everybody understands how this goes. It doesn't go away, it usually gets worse, it's going to be back to us, and now we're going to know what the defects are, we're going to know what the price is, and everybody's going to be madder. Because somebody's going to pick up the tab.
But, that also gives us the time for, to find out from the bonding company.
Will they pick up the tab?
We found these defects, we estimate it's going to be this much, if we fix them, do we get bond money? In a nutshell.
I'll save you a lot of time.
So.
I think I know the answer to that one right now, but I'll let you go down and chase that goose.
So, Rhonda, with the Avila, when you bring it back, you'll either have the paperwork that you need, or that will be removed, and we don't have to deal with it anymore?
I don't know if it'll come back or not. I don't know. You guys got the letter the last time from the division president, that we cannot continue with additional punch list items. There's a process, we get the acceptance, we have the bond for three years, we do the final walkthrough and address punch list items at that time. We're not motivated to say no to punch list items, but we got to start the clock on turning over the maintenance of these obligations.
And we understand that, but you have a document issue, too. We don't have all of the documents in front of us tonight, even considering.
Well, you can accept it without Avila, though. You know, to hang down over us and have us do more maintenance for another, how many years, we're not doing it.
I don't have a problem with the Avila issue at all, but we have other issues that are in addition to Avila. If it comes back and Avila's dropped out, as long as the Avila people have been made aware, and we have a copy of the letter to them, telling them, it's either now or forever, you forget it. I don't have a problem with that. They want to go out there on that limb, let them go, we'll saw it off.
I just need the clock to start.
We're not going to appease them. But, I'm concerned, and I remember the little speech that he made, and my deal is, is that, it's just like the football game, it's 60 minutes, and they want to quit at 59. It's not that a way. We have to have all these documents to accept these. And whether they take them 10 years to do it, or five years, or six years, that's not our problem. It's just that simple, and he knows that. He can sit there and do all the bull he wants, but he knows the answer to that. The documents should have been submitted at that time, and we wouldn't even be here talking about it.
Can we go on to another item, or can we take the right?
So, yeah.
Well, I want to make sure that they agree to that, because if we can get the punch list, that punch list isn't going to take any time at all to walk those streets. That's not going to be that difficult. I agree with Tony, putting all this documentation in our board packet, I don't see how you're going to do that in the two weeks. But if they would consent, and I would consent to the deduction or the elimination of Avila from, or that area, from this. But if we get the other documents that Charles supposedly already has, and we can meet the first week in February, I would sort of like to put in writing that we're not going to have that issue, so that we get that off the table right now. If they're not going to fix whatever this identified new punch list is, then we have to figure out how we're going to resolve it, because we're going to be talking about the same thing then.
What we need to know is, really, the bond. Is the bond going to pay for it? How's it going to be paid for it? That's the question the board wants answered.
This is inconsistent with Casella. I just want you to recognize that. This is inconsistent.
What did we do at Casella? I'm new, what did we do at Casella that's inconsistent?
No, Casella, we just did in October. It was accepted. You had the same concerns about Casella, that there were additional, so I'm not, so that everybody can hear me, you had the same concerns with Casella, one and two.
It had legal documents missing?
No, about punch list.
See, I think it's apples and oranges.
No, it really isn't. Avila, you can accept it without Avila tonight. There's nothing that's preventing you from doing that. And that's fine with us, okay? Regarding the additional punch list items, you had the same issue with Casella, you accepted it, you know, we've submitted a bond for that, it's going to be in place for three years, we'll do the final walkthrough, we'll address those issues.
Rhonda, I'm hearing that there's more documents missing than just Avila, the issue.
No, it's just Avila. David just said.
Rhonda, Pelican Preserve Community Association documents have not been provided. No, they've not been provided.
They don't have a sign.
That was my, that was why my recommendation to the board, to not even consider it tonight.
I think it's, that's why I think it's a little bit different.
It's more than just, but even with it, we still need to know what the defects are out there.
And then do a conditional approval based on the documents that were just completed.
No, Madam Chairman, I'm not, I don't want that. I would have it all come before the board, the public sees the documents, the board sees the documents beforehand.
Well, the one.
The fact that we're taking it on faith from you, that the documents are in Mr. Mann's hands or inbox, but we haven't had the opportunity to see those, or review them, or know that they exist. We're kind of on faith.
Well, even if we had them tonight, right now, we don't have the issue to the bond, because you've indicated that, unless I misunderstood you, WCI Lennar is not going to make the repairs to these additional items.
What additional items?
That they're going to go out in punch list.
That, more punch lists.
I know, but I'm just saying, and correct me if I'm wrong.
We'll do it at the end, we've got to start the clock to get it reduced.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, if I may, just one thought. Again, I think what's frustrating to me, and the district as a whole, is that this journey started in October 2012. Some of the issues remaining today were first brought to attention of Lennar WCI back in October 2012. So them crying foul that the materials have been damaged by construction over the last five years, because the district has not accepted it in the last five years, I think is disingenuous, quite frankly. Because the holdup has been on the lack of the proper documents being provided, in my opinion, by WCI to have a complete turnover package.
I understand, but as I understood you just a while ago, you were taking the position that these additional items that we were, may find, you were not going to address nor pay for nor repair.
The way, I don't, first of all, there's been no evidence that has been submitted that says that there are issues by your district engineer.
Let's, for just argumenting, let's say there are. Are you all going to repair them before we do this, or are you going to hold off for three years and then allow the bond to do it?
I want to comply with the permit criteria manual, which I have, and now it's your term to comply.
We need the answer from the bond company.
Yeah, we need the, we need the answer from the bond company, and we need the legal documents.
Well, that's a no-brainer, but the Avila doesn't bother me at all. I see what they're up against on that. If the people over there, Avila, doesn't want to sign off.
Carve them out.
Carve them out.
Carve them out.
Yeah, carve them out.
I've had a request for a five-minute break, so.
Bill, you fool.